I say council meeting to order and I want you to council on the capin.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to introduce my very good friend Jim Reese and Cindy Sarf's partner in crime. He is a graduate and former quarterback of the University of Minnesota, served as a legislative aide to Tampa City Council members John Dingfelder and yours truly for 11 years, formerly the mayor of his hometown, Patchog. (laughing). It's Patchog, New York. Jim has also served as a commissioner of general services for Suffolk County, New York, and as the director of facilities management for Pasco County, and he was the best aide ever. Thank you, Jim, for being here. Please stand for the invocation and remain standing with the pledge of allegiance.
Good morning. It has been said that the moral test of a government is how that government treats those in the dawn of life, our children, those in the twilight of life, our elderly, and those who are in the shadows of life, the sick, the needy, and the disabled. With that in mind, let us pray. Dear Lord, be present with us today. Join us as we gather in a wider search for truth and purpose. In this quest, may we greet one another with open hearts and minds. May we inspire each other to consider new questions and seek deeper meaning, and may we cultivate wisdom and compassion on behalf of everyone in our community. Let all who enter this chamber today see your welcome face, hear a kind word, and find comfort in our community. And may all that is said and done here today be in service to love, fellowship, and justice. Amen.
(inaudible) United States of America and the Republic of which stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Do roll call.
Suarez.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Maniscalco.
Here.
Capin.
President.
Miranda.
Here.
Diarra.
Here.
Ready.
Here. All right, get a motion for approval, adjutant in the dinner room. All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor, the motion say aye.
Aye.
Those polled. All right, let me just advise you on some adjustments in the agenda today. We're going to stop at 11:30 so that those who are going to the luncheon can be able to get out there in time. What we're, after we do the committee reports, then we're gonna move to do the tree ordinance, so everybody before they have to leave to get a chance to discuss that. And I'll suggest that we reconvene after the break to 2 o'clock if that's fine with everybody.
Because some of us can't come back this afternoon, we were thinking we might be able to actually get through the agenda this morning, so hopefully that'll be the case.
All right, keep that in mind, and everything gonna be, everything gonna be sure.
So we'll go expeditions.
Okay, all right, go to item number one. Ms. Celeste.
Good morning, City Council, and thank you for allowing me to come before you. My name is Celeste Gibbons-Peeples. I'm the president of the City of Tampa's Black History Committee, and me along with the committee, we'd like to formally invite you to our upcoming 31st Annual Black History Celebration, which is held on February 12 at 11:00 a.m. at the Tampa Convention Center in Ballroom C and D. Our theme this year is Ingenuity Stems from the Black Community, as we know, the stems science, technology, engineering, and mathematics. So we also are having our keynote speaker is former city architect, Mr. James Jackson. He will be our keynote, as he was the City of Tampa's first African-American city architect. So he'll be our keynote, and we'll have entertainment by a local jazz artist by the name of Tom Baptist. So it should be good and entertaining, free and open to the public. We invite you to come, enjoy, we'll have vendors, you know, authors, retail sellers, and community partners, and some of our sponsors will have a table in Ballroom D. It's free, open to the public, we have a little refreshments, and we hope to help for you all to come out and enjoy. And I know I want to introduce, I want to have my committee, some of our committee members come up and introduce themselves as well.
Good morning, Council. My name is Marneeta Richardson. I am employed with the City of Tampa in Technology and Innovation, and I am the service desk supervisor. I also serve as the sponsorship chairperson for the committee.
Good morning, I'm Bridget Gordon. I work with TNI, and I am the vice president of the Black History Committee.
Good morning, my name is Wanda Thompson. I'm a member of Planning and Development. I work in the Real Estate Division. I'm assistant treasurer for the committee.
Hi, I'm Debbie Mercer, and I work with the City Council, City Clerk Office, and I'm the treasurer for the City of Tampa Black History Committee.
Anthony McGee, I work in the Purchasing Department, and I'm just a member.
Y'all missing one person, right?
We're missing a couple people. You know, we're missing a few people, and you know, we had, one of our members was Cedric McCray, and we miss him, you know, but he, we still call on him.
Yeah, you text me this morning to tell us for me to be nice to you.
Well, I'm so glad. You're always nice to me, so I thank you for that.
All right.
I thank you, and I just want to say, you know, we solely appreciate all the support that council has given us throughout the years for coming to support our celebration, coming to, you know, and supporting our fundraisers, and just, you know, just being very nice and open to talking with us and any suggestions, you know, that we have, you have been taking the time and listening to. And for those that may be our last time we see them because you're going on to future endeavors, we wish you all the luck, and again, we thank you.
So that refreshment will be real food, right?
Yes, it will be real food.
All right, we want to go out on top.
Yes, yes, we definitely want to do that.
Thank you. Any questions from the council? All right, we thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
We'll go to public comments. Ms. Chet.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning. The Tampa City Council welcomes public comment at this time. Thirty minutes have been set aside this morning for citizens speaking about matters that are not set for a public hearing. If you are here to speak on a matter that is set for a public hearing, you will have that opportunity later during today's meeting. Speakers addressing items on the agenda will be given preference before citizens speaking on non-agenda matters. Each speaker is given three minutes. Please begin by stating your name for the record, and it is requested that your comments are not directed personally to a council member or staff member, but rather issues directed to the council as a body. City Council appreciates your cooperation in maintaining orderly conduct and proper decorum. Thank you.
All right, for the living record, by the living record, by the living record, I am worldwide, global sovereign, despot. I am the living system, I am the living government, I am the living true tribunal court. I'm gonna explain what's going on with all of your governments right now, 'cause all of your governments globally are going through a reorganization reform, being overseen by Prime Minister for United States President Donald J. Trump. Don't get that mixed up with formal United States, which Barack Obama illegally, not lawfully, never constitutionally sold citizens' names and identity under his presidency. Right now, we're going through a global release out of a, what you call a modern-day slave system. That is why Blue Campaign and Blue Star is head off all across the globe. I am your living homeland security, your living law enforcement, your living system. I am the living system that oversees everything in your commercial system. Your commercial system was set up before I got here. That's the whole candidite in agreement. Okay, the 12 tribes are the ones running the commercial scene. Us, the 13 family, us, America over here, us, Aboriginals, Indigenous, the ancient families, the original families, Freemasons, Eastern Stars, we are coming back into place and to taking our positions. Look, you guys set up the work scene, you guys set up the workers. That's where your civilians and public sector and citizens, members, residents, tenants come into play. But you can't have that without a living family. That's what Trump was trying to explain to you, that we over here, America, we are the living family. The rest of the globe, like Africa and the rest of them, they are like business. Now, business is never supposed to ever overrun family, ever overrun people, as we have opened up the government here in Tampa as the headquarters, here in Tampa as the capital, 'cause only a living people can open up a government, and only a living people can issue true living currency. So that's the lawful ones, and the only lawful kingdom, and the only living kingdom, to set for 2019 years, as the rest of the globe went lawless, went under policy, went under military, went under everything but law, as all the religions agree that they were not under law and not under God. So as we come out of darkness, come out of niggardness, come into the light, come into intellectualness, we need the governments to get set on a mind frame moving forward. We're not chasing your ghosts, we're not sitting there dwelling in your wickedness, as we need all people to heal, all families to heal, as we need, you know, families to return to families, communities. Stop all this petty war. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Good morning, Council. My name is Rod Hatch, and my wife Rebecca Hatch. We live at 1013 East Patterson Street. Can I hand this up to you? My wife and I moved into Seminole Heights two years ago. We love Seminole Heights, we love the city of Tampa. We're from the perpetual dreariness of Ohio originally, so we really enjoy the sunshine, and the hotter the better. We're always outside. Purchased a house two years ago, as I mentioned, and we put in a pool, we invested in our house, it's our largest investment. Approximately this past, at the end of December, we had a new neighbor move in, he actually moved in last, last summer, but at the end of December, he decided to build a skate ramp in his backyard, without permits, right on our property line, at 700 square feet. We lost all privacy on our first floor. Not that we lose all privacy on our first floor, but from our second floor window, when you look out, all you can see is a skate ramp, a skating structure. I didn't want to be that neighbor. I tried to work with him, I tried to, you know, I offered to help him move it, and his exact words were, "He doesn't want to move it because he doesn't want to look at it from his bedroom." My biggest frustration, my, I have so many concerns, which I've listed all in the handout that I gave you, but my largest concern is obviously my property value and my privacy. Nobody would ever want to buy our home, should we have to sell our home because of what this neighbor has done. More importantly, in all the ordinances, I couldn't find, and everybody I've talked with, there's some, there's some discrepancies as to what's considered a structure or not. Now, he was just cited yesterday by code enforcement, but there is some question, I believe, whether it was considered a structure or not, and zoning called it a structure. They need to move it in 21 days, but in the meantime, we have to listen to it every night. In the brochure, I also bought a decibel reading as well, too. Every time they use it, it's higher than 60 decibels. Sorry, I'm nervous this morning, Council. I'd like something done, you know, obviously immediately, but I know that's not realistic. Becky, do you want to add anything?
Ms. Suarez.
Yep, Mr. Hatch, I had received your email. I sent it on to both Tom Snelling, who's in charge of our construction services, to find out if it was built with a permit or not. I'm not sure if you knew that or not, and then also about with code enforcement to find out, you know, what, what is going on. So I haven't gotten a response yet. I just sent it this morning. You had sent your email a couple days ago.
Correct.
I had some technology issues with my computer, so I saw it this morning, and we'll get back to you. I've got your email, and I'm going to respond regardless.
Well, I also do want to say thank you, you know, I emailed the mayor's office as well over the weekend, and Monday code enforcement was on my door, knocking at the door, so I was very impressed with that, so thank you for that.
Ms. Maniscalco.
So the neighbor said they don't want to move it closer to their home because they don't want to see it from their window?
Correct.
But they move it closer to your property line, so you have to see.
It's on the property line, and also an adjacent neighbor. Other neighbors have complained as well, too. He just refuses to do anything.
Okay, I've prepared this motion that I'll bring up at the end of the meeting, you know, regarding this, so, you know, we'll get the ball rolling. I know code enforcement's on it, but we'll see what else we can do from, from our vantage point.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I had a constituent that had this problem about six years ago in Beach Park, and it was extremely upsetting to them because they would sit in their backyard and listen to the noise. And at the time, we were investigating it, there was some reliance from the person who built it on the swing, on the way swing sets are constructed. They had used the playground equipment rules to justify doing this. And what ultimately happened is while it was going on, the thing was destroyed in a storm, and it ended up, the problem got, got sort of resolved because it was actually, it actually got destroyed by...
That's what you hoped.
So I, so it didn't, it didn't resolve itself.
That's just it, you know, it's a giant, it's a giant sale. It's not, it's not on the grounds, the danger, you know, skateboard's flying over our fence because it's right on the property line. There's, there's so many negative things there that our, our property value is greatly diminished as a result of this.
And your quiet enjoyment.
Yeah, exactly. And our privacy, we have no privacy anymore. So any, anything the council could do to expedite this processing, get this issue resolved, and more importantly, get it addressed in our ordinances, we'd really appreciate it, because more are coming. There's three now in Seminole Heights that I'm aware of, and it's gonna be an issue.
Well, thank you. I think we got two council members that have indicated that we'll work with you on this.
Thank you.
All right, next speaker.
Good morning, Council, Jerry Frank House with the President. We want to make sure that you are aware of the tree ordinance thing, we're back at it again. It's number 62 on the agenda, so it's gonna be in your, after lunch. Would like to make sure that you are in with Plan B, Option B, and also make sure that the neighborhoods are noticed whenever there's a problem with the tree, whether it's good, bad, or indifferent. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Honorable Counsel, Cynthia Duncan. I want to thank you for your patience, your time, and attention to the tree code issue. You're like, how did this happen? When we briefed you last year, we briefed six of you, and the briefing was, the tree removal zone is the small lot, that hasn't changed, but it was, the tree is within 10 feet of the structure, 10 feet. The builders and the tree advocates were all on board with that, we just hadn't gotten the city on board. So we came to you and we briefed you. Gina Grimes came with this, Jennifer Moßinger came with this, we were all in sync, and it was 10 feet from the tree. Look at the slide I gave you last year. Then, when we met with the city, they said it has to be scientific, it has to be, it needs to be the PRZ. So I questioned it at the time, but I changed it. Gary Brown's now asking me, why are you trying to fix this? Do you feel guilty because you wrote the code? Yes, I do. As Councilwoman Capin said, you make a deal, you stick with the deal, not if you realize the deal is flawed. In December of last year, we started working with the city on implementation of the Tree Removal Zone Amendment, and then we saw the flaw. There's nothing to prevent a builder from moving a house closer to a tree just to cut it down. That's been fixed by Krista Mora in the rewrite. We were either coming to you to fix the rewrite, or we were coming to you to change the amendment. So we've been working with the builders for two months now, and we can't come to closure. All I will ask is that the tree removal zone was supposed to remove trees that the VRB's gonna remove anyway. The VRB's not gonna remove a tree that's 20 feet from a structure, they're gonna look at the limbs, can you prune the limbs? They're gonna look at setbacks, can you move into the setbacks? They're gonna look at reconfiguration, can you reconfigure? They're gonna look at pruning and alternate construction methods. For the tree removal zone, we're not looking at any of that, it's a streamlined process. Where's the tree, is it in the zone, is it so close to the house that you couldn't shift or use alternate construction methods and save it? That distance is the critical root zone. So we agreed to the PRZ, but now we see, working with Kathy Beck on the actual implementation, that too many trees are gonna be removed. So worst case, if you make that a shorter distance, a few trees will have to go to the VRB because they're no longer eligible, and the VRB will look at, can we prune, can we use reasonable reconstruction and save the tree? So it's like when you go and you get your hair cut. In military, you gotta keep your hair a certain length, so you go every month and get it trimmed, and get it trimmed, and get it trimmed, and they cut a little bit, and then you go, let's streamline this process, let's not get our hair cut every four days, let's cut it off, let's cut our hair so that we don't have to do this. We streamline the process. Well, that happened, I can't undo that, I can't put it back. When you cut down these live oaks, because you set that, that barrier out too far, you can't unplant them. That 50-inch live oak will not grow back in our lifetime, in your lifetime, your children's lifetime, probably anyone who's alive today's lifetime. So let's err on the side of the trees, you can always cut more, you can't uncut those trees.
Are you gonna paste that back on?
I'm not able to do that.
Yeah. Chair, if I could.
So think about that, you can't uncut these trees.
I just, let's get clear on something, two things. One, the options, the choices that were presented, and I think you probably saw them, I hope that they sent it to you, what are the options that you're asking us to approve today?
Option B.
Option B on everything?
Yes.
All, all your recommendations is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make sure.
We changed Option B to agree with the staff on the pruning, because we realized that that's the current...
No, I got it, no, I understand, I want to make sure we're clear about that. The other thing my father always used to say, who was a barber, he says, if I make a mistake of my hair, he can come back in three weeks, I'll fix it, so congratulations, I hope you're getting your hair done today.
I'm gonna have to make an appointment, I wasn't sure I was gonna actually do this. So please err on the side of the trees, cut your, you can, the next council, hopefully the top of you, can, can move it further up.
That is a first. I've been here nine years, that is a first, where someone cuts their hair. How about you? How long have you been here? Have you seen that?
I just saw it.
No, yeah, that's a first, that is a first. Yeah, okay, no, that's it.
I can't undo it, neither can the city.
All right, we thank you, we hope you frame that.
Thank you.
My name's Captain Frank Wild Williams, Paradise Missionary Baptist Church. Wish y'all have done much damage to my church by putting a fence around the church where I can't get into my parking lot. And I've been coming here Thursday after Thursday after Thursday, and nothing ever get done, as if y'all don't care. And when you talk about black history, I need to know what money is white history, so I could write a book about it. And I could tell you the truth, white history is a dark history for black folks, and I'm gonna write a book about it, and I'm writing a book about it as we talk. The basic reason I come up here, black folks really don't know black history. Long time ago, they called us, when the slaves was here, they'd say we was only one fifth of the human being, not realizing God created us in His image. If he's calling us one fifth of the human being, what you gonna call God? I got a big problem with that. So we have to understand, God made everything, created the heaven and the earth, and all that happens that there is. Well, we want to leave God out of everything. We got so much killing going on in the schoolyard now, when that woman Marilyn Harris, she her daughter didn't have to pray in school, they took prayer out of school, took the Bible out of school, now the atheist devil going there killing up all the innocent children, they can't even go to school in peace. It's so sad, and yet y'all promote stuff like that, look like they mean. And I'm having a problem with this administration, supposed to be doing what the people need them to do, and we supposed to be the one that elected y'all, but y'all not doing nothing for us. Only thing y'all doing, what y'all common that be agrees, and that's not right. If the people put you in there, then y'all to stand up for the people's sake. No, it's not going like that. Glory be to God. God's gonna have his judgment one day sooner or later. I'm gonna read some scripture out of the Bible before y'all cut me off. Let not your, just 14th chapter of St. John, let not your heart be troubled. Let not your heart be troubled. You believe in God, believe also in Me. That's what Jesus Christ talking about, not me myself. In My Father, House of many mansion, if it were not so, I would have told you. I go to prepare place for you. And if I go to prepare place for you, I will come again and receive you unto Myself. That where I am, there ye be also. And whether I go, ye know, and the way ye know. Thomas said unto him, Lord, we know not whether I go, and how can we know the way? Jesus Christ said, I am the way, the truth, and the light. No man coming unto the Father but by Me. I hope y'all digest that. In the name of Jesus Christ.
Good morning, Counsel Steve Michelini. You know, the word compromise means that both sides give. And this has been a very long process regarding the tree code. There's, there's no side particularly that is winning or losing. We sat, we discussed, we modified, we amended, we revised. We sent all of that stuff into the city council. We worked with the city staff, with the city legal department. And to come up and say, we want all of our options being included as, as the option for the ordinance adoption, is fundamentally wrong. That is not a compromise. That is, we want it our way. I don't have any hair to cut off and be dramatic and say, you know, cut this, and this is going to happen. That's not the point. The point is, we sat down, we reached an agreement, and if you want to come back and later and amend this code, that can happen. It's being transferred out of one section of the code, and it's being placed in the chapter twenty-seven, where those amendments can take place fairly quickly. We haven't even tried this code yet. We, we are imagining that people are going to abuse it. You cannot assume that there's going to be abuse before it happens. These are good people that are trying to do this. This is not just builders and developers. These are homeowners. So, you know, all those rules will apply to everyone. And it's extremely difficult to get through the process. It will be even more difficult for a homeowner to get through the process once this is adopted. This is not an easy decision, and it's not an easy process. So, I'm respectfully requesting that you go with what the city has requested. We, we agreed on the twenty-foot, on the root protective zone. I don't see any reason, except for speculation, to change it. I would appreciate your consideration and supporting that. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else want to speak during the public comment?
All right. Do we have any requests by the public for reconsideration of legislative maps? Then none. We go to committed reports. Item number two. The ordinance, yes, ma'am.
Good morning. Items number two, Julie Hardy, Legal Department. Items number two, three, four, and five are all similar. They're declarations, state declarations that previous ordinances are null and void because certain conditions weren't met within the timeframes under those ordinances. If you have any questions.
Any questions from council? Mr. Suarez, do item number two.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I present a first reading for, excuse me, I present an ordinance for first reading consideration, an ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, declaring ordinance number two zero zero two dash eight nine, which vacated, closed, discontinued, and abandoned certain rights away. Portions of Walton Street, Ball Street, Cumberland Street, Garrison Avenue, Caesar Street, together with certain alleys lying in an area generally bounded by Finley Street on the north, Boring Street, and Channelside Drive on the south, Nebraska Avenue on the west, and Beneficial Drive and CSX Railroad right-of-way on the east. In map of Finley and Caesar subdivision, AW Gilchrist Oak Grove addition to Tampa and Chamberlain subdivision, all being subdivisions of the City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, to be null and void by operation of law due to petitioner's failure to meet the conditions set forth therein, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing an effective date.
We got a motion from Mr. Suarez, seconded by Mr. Viera. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Repose.
Mr. Chairman, second reading and adoption will be held on March seventh, twenty nineteen, at nine thirty a.m.
Okay, we go to item number three. Mr. Corn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance, excuse me? Let me start again. I move an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, declaring ordinance number two thousand four dash one seven four, which vacated, closed, discontinued, and abandoned rights away. Portions of Walton Street, Ball Street, Cumberland Street, Garrison Avenue, Caesar Street, together with certain alleys lying in an area generally bounded by Finley Street on the north, Boring Street, and Channelside Drive on the south, Nebraska Avenue on the west, and Beneficial Drive, and CSX Railroad right-of-way on the east. In map of Finley and Caesar subdivision, AW Gilchrist Oak Grove addition to Tampa and Chamberlain subdivision, all being subdivisions of the City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, to be null and void by operation of law due to petitioner's failure to meet the conditions set forth therein, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing an effective date.
Second.
We got a motion from Mr. Corn, seconded by Mr. Manaskeko. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose.
Mr. Chair, second reading and adoption will be held on March seventh, twenty nineteen, at nine thirty a.m.
Okay, item number four, Mr. Manaskeko.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I have an ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance of the City of Tampa, Florida, declaring ordinance number two thousand five dash one zero four, which vacated, closed, discontinued, and abandoned a portion of right-of-way on this Unionist Avenue lying between Morgan Street on the west and Jefferson Street on the east, and the Henry and Knights map of the garrison. A subdivision of the City of Tampa, Florida, Hillsborough County, Florida, to be null and void by operation of law due to petitioner's failure to meet the conditions set forth therein, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing an effective date.
Second.
We got a motion from Mr. Manaskeko, seconded by Mr. Corn. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose.
Mr. Chair, second reading and adoption will be held on March seventh, twenty nineteen, at nine thirty a.m.
Item number five, Ms. Kapine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. File number C zero seven dash twelve, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration, an ordinance in the City of Tampa, Florida, declaring ordinance number two thousand seven dash two three six, which vacated, closed, discontinued, abandoned certain right-of-way, and all the portion, all the, that portion of Ball Street that is bound by Caesar Street to the west and south, Meridian Avenue to the east. In AW Gilchrist Oak Grove subdivision, the City of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, to be null and void by operation of law due to petitioner's failure to meet the conditions set forth herein, providing for repeal of all ordinances in conflict, providing for an effective date.
All right, we got a motion from Ms. Kapine, seconded by Mr. Moran. Any discussion on the motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose.
Mr. Chair, second reading and adoption will be held on March seventh, twenty nineteen, at nine thirty a.m.
Okay, go item number six. Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move file number six, file number twenty nineteen dash eight dash twenty-seven, ordinance being presented for first reading consideration. An order designating a portion of Tampa as a clean zone in order to regulate activities from April third, twenty nineteen, through April eighth, twenty nineteen, in preparation for hosting the twenty nineteen NCAA Women's Final Four, designating geographic boundaries, times, dates, and times for the clean zone, regulating, prohibiting temporary outdoor activities, tents, signage, and commercial promotion in the right-of-ways, providing for inspection and permits, providing for penalties, providing for definition, providing for servability, repealing conflicts, providing for effective date.
Second.
All right, we got a motion from Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Manaskeko. If anyone here to say what would be the boundaries of the clean zone?
Public Law Department. It is exactly the same boundary that was adopted as part of your twenty-seventh for the NHL All-Star, but I will put the map up on the... That's the upper boundary. And this is the lower boundary. And it's exactly what was for the NHL All-Star game.
Okay. Thank you. All right, motion from Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Manaskeko. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose.
Mr. Chair, second reading and adoption will be held on March seventh, twenty nineteen, at nine thirty a.m.
Okay, we go to committed reports. Safety, Mr. Moran.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Move item number seven.
We got a motion from Mr. Moran, seconded by Mr. Corn. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Okay, park recreation, Mr. Manaskeko.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I move items eight through fourteen.
Second.
We got a motion from Mr. Manaskeko, seconded by Mr. Suarez. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Okay, so the words, Ms. Kapine.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I move items fifteen through twenty-eight.
Second.
We got a motion from Ms. Kapine, seconded by Mr. Manaskeko. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Fundance, Mr. Corn.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I move items twenty-nine and thirty.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Corn, seconded by Mr. Manaskeko. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Okay. Building zone and preservation, Mr. Viera.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move items thirty-one through thirty-seven.
Second.
Motion from Mr. Viera, seconded by Ms. Kapine. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Okay, transportation, Mr. Suarez.
Thank you, Chair. I move items thirty-eight through forty-five.
Second.
We got a motion from Mr. Suarez, seconded by Mr. Corn. All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Repose. Okay, we go to nine thirty.
Move to open the nine thirty public hearings, items forty-six.
Before we do that, I was going to move the truth.
Oh, okay, got it.
Item number sixty, what is it, sixty-two, sixty-three?
Yes, sir.
All right, we're going to go to item number sixty-two.
Good morning, counsel. Kristin Mora, Legal Department. As you know, we were here last week to discuss the remaining policy questions for the tree code rewrite. I'm just going to go through them very briefly again with you, as well as some changes or tweaks, if you will, that, that came in this week. The first policy issue is the question of proximity of the structure to the tree in the tree removal zone. This is for grand trees only, actually. So, you could actually put grand here. The protected trees will be tree-specific, protective root zone for all the protected trees. So, this is just the question of proximity for grand trees, as we discussed last week. And as you heard testimony from, from Ms. Kathy Beck with our natural resources, the majority of grand trees can be saved at fifteen feet based on the experience of the staff. And the, the tree advocacy groups, I think, have all reached out this week and suggested that they are also behind the fifteen-foot distance for that use. As for the second policy decision, there's actually sort of, sort of two issues wrapped up in that. The first one is the automatic reduction. What you heard this week, excuse me, from, from the tree advocacy groups is that they actually want these to be considered, not required. We can write that into the code as a consideration instead of as a requirement as a part of reasonable reconfiguration. But I will tell you as a practical standpoint, that the variance review board is seeing this, and they know that you can do the forty percent reduction in order to save the tree, and that would save the tree. They're probably going to require it. So, while consideration, we can, we can state it as a consideration in the code. I think as a practical reality, it's probably going to become a requirement. I just, so that you have the full information in front of you, that explanation. The other part of this is the, having the new automatic reductions. This is the twenty-five percent front yard regardless of planning district, forty percent rear yard, and one-foot sides, automatic for a, in this case, we're talking about it in terms of grand trees, where it would, where that would protect the tree and allow it to be preserved. The advocacy groups have suggested it should apply to all lots within the city. So, that is the second part of this, this consideration. And just to briefly touch on option C.
Excuse me a second.
Excuse, excuse.
Ms. Mora, you know, I'm looking at this as a building industry recommendation. Is this what we approved the first time? I mean, the title on here is throwing me a little bit because...
Sure.
It's what was agreed to, or just...
This, this, yeah, this is part of the, so these, these reductions were part of the original agreement that's in the interim, well, was a part of the agreement for the interim ordinances. So, so this was, not that it be considered, but the automatic reductions were. This is in the code today. These are reductions that are allowed in the code today through a design exception.
Okay.
And these would be required to attempt to be utilized to save the tree before it can be removed.
What I'm asking here, what I'm asking now, is this title that says, "Building Industry Recommendation, Option A."
Yes. Oh, wait.
Okay.
Up here? Yes.
At the very top.
Yes.
Policy decisions, okay.
Yes, this is definitely the same as the interim ordinance.
Okay, but this was a recommendation by everybody.
Correct.
So, when this title is here, it's not correct. This is not correct. It was by everyone.
Yes, yes, you're, you're correct. This is, this is what was in the interim ordinances, and it was the joint recommendation. You're correct.
Now, the second one is a recommendation which is a change to what everyone agreed to. And the option A should not just say, "Building Industry Recommendation." It was everybody's recommendation. And that is very misleading.
My apologies.
You don't need to apologize. I just want the public to know that this was what was agreed to in the first place, and it's, and it's being billed as only the industry wanted it. And that's not true. That is absolutely not true. And then it's, the other one's billed as tree advocacy group recommendation. This is a change to what was agreed to the first time. And that's how that title should read.
You are right.
Thank you. Thank you for my time.
Okay. So, so option C here, this would allow, this is a little bit different from the tree advocacy group's recommendation, sort of a middle ground, if you will. It would allow the design exception permitted distances, which is the same as what the building industry has on here. But where the new automatic reductions are allowed for the tree removal zone eligible lots, they would be required to utilize those automatic reductions since they can take those reductions. So, it's a little bit of an interim, because there are going to be situations where a tree removal zone eligible lot does have to go to the VRB. If the tree's not in the tree removal zone, for example, it will not be allowed to be removed administratively. It will have to go to the VRB. And in that case, the question of whether or not shifting the setbacks would save the tree will come up. So, option C is sort of a middle ground that, that is another option the city council could take. On the last point, the pruning work that requires a permit, what you heard from the tree advocacy group this week is that they sort of married their position to the staff recommendation that all grand tree limbs require a permit for pruning. The, that is actually current code, and I'll just write this in here as another option, that you could stick with the current code. So, that would be the, all grand tree limbs would require a permit for pruning, and protected tree limbs over, greater than four inches or greater, over right-of-way would be required. And that is the current code today. And in terms of the staff recommendation, just as a point of clarification, what's key to the staff recommendation is that current code provision about the grand tree limbs. That's the part that the staff definitely does not want to lose because we already have a lot of incidents of people damaging grand trees in the city, and we don't want to open the door for, you know, more potential bad pruning. So, that is the essence of the staff recommendation, more so than the change of these specimen tree limbs. So, that's a little bit more background and discussion on these. As you can see, I have these lovely boards that I have created, and I'm more than happy to discuss tree removal zones, setback reductions, and anything else the council would like me to discuss, available for your questions.
All right, any questions from counsel?
I do. And I'm going to go back to that, okay? I'm going back to that because I don't want people to think we, because it, the way it's titled, it seems like we're being biased. And that, to me, is just not acceptable. It's not acceptable at all. We needed to title it the correct way, and it, it really bothers me that I, that it looks like we're being biased by titling it that the, only the building industry recommended this. It really isn't true, and that, uh, so, maybe we could write on the top, "Tree Advocacy Group" and "Building Industry", that would help me. Thank you. Thank you, she's great.
Well, previous tree advocacy.
Alright, um, anyone else, uh, from council? I guess everybody happy, huh?
Yeah, right.
If I could, Chair, you know, there's a couple things here, and, and, uh, Ms. Capin touched a little bit on it, there's some, there's a little bit of changes. What I was looking at from last week, uh, and Mr. Cohen had made the comment about the fifteen-foot, that became a discussion item, obviously became, it came added in there. I'm always one of those people that say, alright, we've got one side that says this, at the time, it was twelve feet, and the building, uh, this is on, uh, selection number one, and then, uh, the building industry was twenty-foot. Fifteen feet to me seems like a adequate, um, compromise from both sides originally, okay? I know that the original previous tree advocacy was twenty-foot, and I understand what Ms. Capin was saying, and I was always looking, how do we get to a compromise on, on one of them? Somebody's gonna come out of this happy, and I think it's just us, because it's not gonna be on our desk anymore, everyone else is probably gonna be coming out of this not happy. I do like, uh, in, in my mind, I think that because of the changes from last week, I would select, in my, this is my own opinion, the option B under one. The options, and you know, the option C and, and option B on number two are similar, and I think easier to explain when you're going forward to try and deal with things. So, I mean, I, I have no problem with, uh, with the tree advocacy group recommendation on option B, and then, in all honesty, the third one is really the staff recommendation, if you look at it, it is almost exactly the same as the tree advocacy group, so there's a little bit of, you know, play on each one of them. I don't have a problem necessarily with, uh, some of the other discussions, I think on number two is really where, um, most of what my discussion item would be, which is the option B, I wanna make sure we stick with that, but that, that is just my opinion, uh, let's see what we can come up with and, and finally get this thing moving. I, if it's, it'll be a motion to accept, um, on policy decision number one, um, option B, on policy decision number two, and this is according to the, uh, the form that was given to us by, uh, Ms., uh, Ms. Moore. Uh, on number two, it would also be option B in, on, on, uh, policy decision number three. They're actually the same as the staff recommendation and as the tree advocacy group, so that was, that would be my, my motion.
Second.
Second.
From who? Uh, part of that motion is that being those options that you just stated would be to transmit to the...
Correct, yes, sir.
Okay, yes, sir. Uh, yep, discussion.
Thank you.
Got a motion from, yeah, got a motion from, uh...
In, in the process of permitting, uh, how is the city gonna, uh, go out and reach out to individuals that presently have licenses and those that don't have licenses that are doing it now? And how are you gonna have a language barrier with some of them who do not speak the language? And how are you gonna get them permitted?
So, the natural resources staff spends a lot of time in the field, and they have a lot of opportunities to interact with people, um, they know a lot of the individuals that they're running into, and they are utilizing those types of channels to try and make direct contact where possible. And, and there are some where it's a language barrier, but, um, we're very lucky, we have some, uh, some bilingual people over at, um, our construction services, land development sections, and they, they assist in those types of situations.
Alright, so that's assumed that all this is done, and yet you miss someone, and he's found doing that, or she's found doing that, what happens then?
We would ask them to come in and do the, the course.
Will they be known?
And come up speed, yes. That, that's, that's the way that we do, um, the city has a lot of licensing issues, and that's, that's the way it's handled.
Alright, thank you.
Ms. Capin?
Yes. I understand the, uh, second, but the first part, moving it to fifteen feet, when it was recommended twenty feet for grand trees and with a six-month or one-year, um... checkup, whatever you wanna call it.
Review.
Review. That is something that I was in favor of, because they had all agreed on it, and I would like to see how that, if it works, and, uh, I, there's nothing wrong with a six-month review, why, why do we, and... They agreed on it, I mean, this went on, this has gone on for what, two years?
Too long.
So, the twenty-foot grand tree with a six-month review is the way I would go. I'm not gonna vote for fifteen-foot, but it may pass, but it's not gonna pass with my vote. I'm, I'm sorry, I just think that they had plenty of time, plenty, more than enough time to look at this, to bring it to us at twenty feet, and, uh, it just needs to be a six-month review as far as I'm concerned, so...
Even, even if we do the fifteen feet, and we still can include the six-month review, right?
Yes, what, whatever option city council goes with, you can do a review in six months, um, the, uh, it's gonna be in chapter twenty-seven, so it'll be, um, you could just make a motion, it'll go into the next cycle to make a, an amendment if you determine there's a problem.
Just, just for clarification, the Parkland Estates issue you dealt with by exempting them, actually?
Correct, and the definition of, uh, tree removal zone eligible lot, Parkland Estates is specifically exempted.
Alright, you have further discussion? Alright, we have a, uh, we would have to make a, if we wanna include the six-month review, could we amend the motion, or we have to do another?
Um, I would suggest that you might do a separate motion, um, to set that review. Um, also, I, I handed out to each of you a next steps, there are some cleanup items that were agreed to over the course of the last couple of community meetings, I wanna make sure those changes are in there as well, um, so if you just wanna reference that as part of your motion.
If I could, Chair, to, uh, to amend my, uh, original motion to include, um, the six-month, uh, uh, review, and in addition, all the other cleanup items that are suggested by legal department, and the motion is to send it to transmit to the planning commission.
Thank you.
Yeah, we got a motion from Mr. Suarez, um, second by Mr. Cohen, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, Council.
Alright, so we threw at trees for a while, right?
Until it comes back for first reading, yes.
You gotta do the motion for the fifteen, sixteen.
He did, he did.
Oh, you...
Yeah.
Council, if I, if I could, just very briefly, I, I think that it might require a motion for this to come back in the evening of March fourteenth, um, I would suggest that as terms of scheduling so that it can be done in advance of...
I, I'll make that motion, you said on, uh, uh, March fourteenth, correct?
March fourteenth in the evening for first reading.
For the first reading, okay.
Okay, we got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Miranda, any discussion of motion? All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Council.
Alright, thank you.
Move to open the nine thirty public hearings, items forty-six through fifty-five.
Alright, got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, item number four to six. I mean, uh, uh, anyone going to speak on item four to six through fifty-four, please stand and be sworn in. Item four to six through fifty-four, please stand and be sworn in.
Please solemnly swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and not any other truth.
I do.
Item number four to six.
Glory Moretta, Land Development, uh, for the record, Council, the site plans were certified and given to the city clerk's office, they apply to item number forty-six, forty-nine, and fifty-two.
Alright, anyone here to speak on item, petitioner, anyone here to speak on item forty-six?
Good morning, Gregory Roth with Boulder Engineering, three eight two zero North Deal Boulevard, and I have been sworn in, uh, on behalf of the petitioner for item number forty-six, we, uh, make ourselves available for any questions. Uh, Mr. Grandolph wishes he could be here, and we're, uh, wishing him a speedy recovery. Anything you need from us, let us know, thank you very much.
You said a speedy recovery.
Uh, he's, uh, minor procedure today, so that's why he's not with us, so, that's why you're stuck with me for the day.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, any question from council? Anyone in the public wishes to speak on item number four to six?
Second.
Got a motion from, from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Viera?
Uh, yes, sir, Mr. Chair, I hereby move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of nine zero eight East Fern Street, nine zero five East North Street, and six three zero seven North Nebraska Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification, SHRS Seminole Heights Single Family Detached Residential Two, or and, excuse me, SHCI Seminole Heights Commercial Intensive to SHPD Seminole Heights Plan Development, multi-family residential and business professional office, providing an effective date.
Alright, got a motion from Mr. Viera, second by Mr. Cohen, please recall your vote.
Motion carried with Maniscalco and Suarez voting no.
Item forty-seven. Anyone here for forty-seven, petitioner, anyone here for forty-seven? Anyone in public wishes to speak on item forty-seven?
Good morning, Ruth London from RV Project Management Group. This is for seventeen forty-five West Hillsborough Avenue. We have to resound the second portion, the rear portion of the lot that on the front on the Hillsborough, that is a CG Sonic, and we are resoning the second part from REC fifty to CG Sonic Design. Do you have any question?
You the petitioner?
Yes.
You the petitioner?
Yes.
Okay, any question for the petitioner? Alright, anyone in the public wishes to speak on item number forty-seven?
Thank you.
Alright, got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Cohen, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Alright, Mr. Cohen.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of seventeen forty-five West Hillsborough Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS fifty, residential single-family and CG Commercial General to CG Commercial General, providing an effective date.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Maniscalco, please recall your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, item forty-eight. Petitioner, anyone?
Uh, good morning, Council, Steve McElhenney, I'm representing the petitioner at thirty-six fourteen West Anderson Avenue, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Any question for the petitioner? Anyone in the public wishes to speak on item forty-eight? Opposed? I got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Suarez, you take forty-eight.
Thank you, Chair, I present an ordinance for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of three six one three West Anderson Avenue in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS sixty residential single-family to RS fifty residential single-family, providing an effective date.
Second.
Alright, got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Miranda, please recall your vote.
Motion carried with Viera being abstained at vote.
Thank you, Council.
Then go to item number forty-nine. Petitioner, anyone here for forty-nine?
Good morning, for the record, Sue Murphy, uh, P&amp;M Consulting, eighteen eighteen New Hampshire Avenue in St. Petersburg, I'm here on behalf of the petitioner, happy to answer any questions, uh, request the opportunity to address any public comment.
Any question for the petitioner? Anyone in the public wishes to speak on item number forty-nine?
Move close. Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Maniscalco, you can read forty-nine.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, I have an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of one 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 West Genesee Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification SHRS Seminole Heights Single Family Detached Residential to SHPD Seminole Heights Plan Development Residential Multi-Family, providing an effective date.
I got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Suarez, and I'm pleased to recall your vote.
Motion carried with Viera being abstained at vote.
Okay, item number fifty. Anyone here, petitioner, anyone here for item number fifty? Anyone in the public wishes to speak on item number fifty? Move close.
Second.
Got a wrote motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Ms. Capin, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Ms. Capin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, the file number REC eighteen dash one, uh, one fourteen, an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of thirty-five eleven Weston Perato Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classifications RM sixteen, sixteen residential multi-family to RM eighteen residential multi-family, providing an effective date.
Second.
Got a motion from Ms. Capin, second by Mr. Maniscalco, please recall your vote.
Motion carried with Viera being abstained at vote.
Okay, item number fifty-one. Anyone here, petitioner, anyone here for item number fifty-one? Anyone in the public wishes to speak on item number fifty-one?
Move close.
We got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Suarez, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Mr. Miranda, would you read?
File number fifty-one, REC eighteen, uh, one one five, ordinance being for second reading adoption, ordinance rezoning property in general vicinity of eighty-seven fourteen North Tampa Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RS fifty residential single-family to RM six eighteen residential multi-family, providing an effective date.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Suarez, please recall your vote.
Motion carried with Viera being abstained at vote.
Alright, item fifty-two.
Um, you guys mentioned the eighty-seven fourteen North Tampa Street? Oh, okay, awesome, thank you.
Good morning, Council, my name is Philip Sage with Camp engineering, representing the applicant, I'm here to take any questions or comments if you have any.
Alright, any question for the petitioner? Okay, anyone in the public wishes to speak on item number fifty-two?
Move close. Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Mr. Suarez?
Thank you, Chair, I present an ordinance for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of two one zero eight West Azio Street in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification RO residential office to PD Plan Development Residential Single Family Attached, providing an effective date.
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Maniscalco, please recall your vote.
Motion carried with Viera being abstained at vote.
Okay, item number fifty-three. Anyone here to speak on, uh, petitioner here for item fifty-three?
Hi, Tara Tedrow here on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions you have, we appreciate staff's recommendation for support and agree with them.
Any question to the applicant? Anyone in the public wishes to speak on item number fifty-three?
A little second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Uh, Mr. Cohen?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, uh, I move an ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance rezoning property in the general vicinity of twenty-eight twelve and twenty-eight fourteen West Dr. Martin Luther King Junior Boulevard in the city of Tampa, Florida, and more particularly described in section one from zoning district classification OP Office Professional to CG Commercial General, providing an effective date.
Alright, you got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda, please recall your vote.
Motion carried with Viera being abstained at vote.
Okay, go to item number fifty-four, petitioner? No, staff?
Land Development Corporation, staff is here to answer any questions.
Any question for staff? Alright, anyone in the public wishes to speak on item number fifty-four?
Second.
Got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Mr. Maniscalco?
Thank you very much, ordinance being presented for second reading and adoption, an ordinance vacating, closing, discontinuing, and abandoning a portion of alleyway right-of-way line south of Eighth Avenue, north of Seventh Avenue, east of Thirty-Fifth Street, and west of Thirty-Sixth Street, and revised map of East Bay Edition, a subdivision in the city of Tampa, Hillsborough County, Florida, the same be more, being more fully described in section one hereof, subject, subject to certain easement reservations, covenants, conditions, and restrictions, more particularly set forth herein, providing an effective date.
Got a motion? I got a motion from Mr. Maniscalco, second by Mr. Miranda, please recall your vote.
Motion carried unanimously.
Okay, item fifty-five.
Good morning, Council. South Radio City Attorney, we're here on item number fifty-five to clarify an ambiguity that's that basic. Let me ask you to keep this public hearing open on this one when you make your decision, because the decision should be made in the public hearing. Also caution you, this isn't litigation, so I'd rather not go into too much detail, but just to clarify an ambiguity.
So we just need to move the resolution?
Sure.
Okay, got a motion?
But you have a public comment, it's a public hearing, so.
Yeah. All right, anyone in the public which should speak on item fifty-five? Is there none?
Second.
I got a motion from Mr. Miranda, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
All right.
Close.
Motion closed here.
Second.
It's not ten-thirty, so we'll go to staff reports.
Chair, I think we need to go over.
Oh, it is? Okay, I'm sorry. I thought it was done. Okay, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
All right.
Close. All right, we'll go to staff reports. Item fifty-nine, League Department.
Chair, I think, if I could, I think fifty-nine is just to approve the resolution for the Black History Committee to have the thing, so I'll move that resolution.
All right, got a motion, motion from Mr. Suarez, second by Mr. Maniscalco, all in favor of that motion, say aye.
All right.
Close. All right, item sixty.
Morning, Council. Randy Gores of the Planning and Development Department. Here he asked us to deal with the planning commission and to look at the future land use designations of the parks that are on the dedicated parks list. What we found was that there's a hundred and fifty-eight sites that are on the list. Thirty-nine have a designation which is a recreation open space today. There's about twenty-four that have some sort of combination of recreation, of recreational open space and right-of-way or public, semi-public, quasi-public, right-of-way, you know, some sort of public category. The big number is the ninety-two sites that are designated something else, some sort of residential, mixed-use, industrial and so forth. What that would mean to move forward on any kind of plan amendment, which you all, I think would be able to figure that out, is ninety-two legal descriptions, ninety-two newspaper advertisements, ninety-two mailings to adjacent properties, ninety-two planning commission public hearings and ninety-two city council public hearings. I think also is that what we've found is that there's twenty-eight parks, sites that are not on the list, so the question has to be asked, should they be on the list? And if they should be, will they require additional plan amendments? Also, none of the sites have a zoning category which would be consistent with a park, excuse me, category, because really not in our zoning category. We have something that could be used, so if we change the land use category, obviously the question would be, do we need to come back with zonings, in which case it would be a hundred and fifty-eight plus rezoning hearings. I think, you know, where we may be going with this, and that is initially it sounded like a great idea to change the land use categories to recreation, open space, but it will trigger a large plan amendment effort that staff has to go through the planning commission as well as you all. It may also trigger an equally large rezoning effort. And as we stick, we, staff stood back, we looked at it, and we came to the conclusion it really isn't the land use or the zoning of the site, it's the ownership of the site that really determines the, what happens with it and so forth. So as long as the city retains ownership, you know it's going to stay in a public use, in a public domain. There are a couple additional protections that we did come up for the comprehensive plan in chapter sixteen, which you may want to consider. One of them is to, in the comprehensive plan, to update the current inventory of parks and recreation. As I mentioned, there's twenty-eight sites that are not on it. The list has buildings on it, it has cemeteries, it has right-of-way, these small little pocket parks. So the question is, you know, what really should be on a dedicated parks list and what is that criteria? So I think there could be a motion to update the inventory and the recreation open space element. There could be some additional policies calling for some public communication or engagement. What we did in the West River area, if you all remember, we had two planning efforts for the Choice Neighborhood Grant that showed that the Little League was going to be used for something else and they were going to be relocated. We had an extensive public outreach. By the time we came to you with the change of the ordinance, everyone in the area knew what was going on and why it was happening. It was maybe not everybody that was supportive of it, but there was a very in-depth public information process. So the current plan could require some additional policies to require some sort of engagement. Your, the current plan also already has policies in it that say if you're going to divert it to private use or a different use, you have to make sure that there's an equal amount of park land preserved or provided for that function.
Well, let him finish then, Chair.
This is my last, my last point. And then a few, of course, we update the comprehensive plan then to come back and to amend chapter sixteen to make it consistent. You've already passed the motion making a vote of five council members to make a change of list, which we agree with, would add that extra protection. And then the other part would be any changes we make in the inventory, any policies, bring that back in the ordinance and make the ordinance completely consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Okay, if I could, you know, you're, the last recommendation which we've already, we've already established, which is to try and change the nature where, how you change a public use, primarily parks, to a private use or to, for any other changes. And, you know, the reason that Ms. Capeen had mentioned it when we were having the discussion last time was that the underlying land use is different in some of these places. We had the same situation come up at Rocky Point. Now, it wasn't a publicly owned piece of land, but at the same time, the argument could be made that some of that could have been publicly owned in some way, not that particular parcel, but other things. So I think that what we might have to do, you did lay out, there's a lot of different changes that might need to be done. I think we need to look and be strategic about those pieces of land that are most important or largest and find out how we change that to make sure that the land use and the zoning classifications match up with what the public use is. I think that it's incredibly important because the other part that we just changed on chapter sixteen, that's the last part. And I'd rather it, I'd rather it be even more difficult in order for them to go back and be able to do change, they'd have to change land use and zoning in order to get to that next step, which is the designation and then the vote here on council, if you follow my understanding. So again, yes, it's a lot of work, but we're going to have to, I think we're going to have to get those parcels and really take a look and see which ones are already designated. I know you had a whole list of them for a lot of different land use categories, but I don't know which ones they are of the ninety-two. I mean, one might be Al Lopez Park for all I know. I'm not saying it is, but I don't know that. So we need to really get through with the Parks Department to look at each one of those parcels and find out which ones we really need to change now, okay? And the most important one, you're right, there's going to be a lot of them that are small parcels that may be pocket parks or maybe even just rights of way that, you know, are considered greenways now as opposed to a park or something else, but we need to know what those are. So I think that that might be the next step, which is get with the Parks Department, and I see Mr. Dow back there. I don't know why staff goes all the way in the back. You can come forward, we're not going to do anything to you, sir.
It's not guaranteed.
It's not guaranteed. That is true. That is true, Ms. Capeen. But we may need to do that, and I may make a motion after the discussion is over to have Parks Department designate, I mean, excuse me, come back with that list so that our council can look at it and determine to take it over and send it over to the planning commission to change some of the land use, depending on what property is, and do the ones that are most critical right now. That would be my suggestion, so. And I don't know if you have any off the top of your head of maybe either the largest parcels or maybe parks that are already not designated as parks?
Well, we would have to look at it, but that's where it gets back to our recommendations.
So you don't have any at the top of your head, is what I'm saying?
I can't remember which ones are about twenty-eight which have the zoning already or the parks already and which ones don't.
I'm looking at the ones, the ninety-two that, and you saw all those land uses.
Everything in downtown is, has a parks, land use of CBD. So you got all the downtown parks.
So Curtis Hickson Park has, does not have a land use that designates it as a park?
No, Herman Massey Park, the, because it was an area-wide, when the CBD land use was designated, was an area-wide designation which designated the entire downtown.
Well, then you answered my first question, which is, that's an important park that we believe, I think that I, my colleagues would probably agree, that that would probably should be, underlying land use should be a park. And, you know, so you've already made my point, which is we do definitely need to look at some of these immediately.
Yeah, and that's why I think that our recommendation was to update the inventory to determine which ones really should be, because we all have, you know, I think you will experience is that we all have what we consider to be an important park. And once we get into the public hearing, we would expect to have neighborhoods say we have an important park.
Sure.
So we, that's why we would say, that's why we recommend a, if you update the comprehensive plan inventory, you allow it to be a public process and let everybody bring their information in, and we come to you with finally a dedicated parks list, which hopefully has passed the criteria test of not only what staff would think would be an important park, but also what the public would think would be an important.
How long would it take you to get especially some of the more important parks like, you know, Curtis Hickson, which is a larger park, and some of the other larger parks that might have some different designations and, excuse me, land use categories? How long do you think that would take to bring back to us so that we can transmit to planning commission?
We could bring back a list to you very quickly of what we think are some key parks.
Yeah.
Question is, is can you, would you be able to tell us you agree with that quickly so we can move on?
Yeah, I think we need to know that list.
It's always the process that we have.
The point is, I think we need to know that list so we can move forward, so, and so. I'm done for right now.
Ms. Capeen.
Okay, as far as I'm concerned, they're all important parts.
Sure.
They're all, all of them. Everything that is public should stay public, and the underlying, thank you for running with that and.
And thank you for bringing it up.
Yeah, absolutely. When you say important parks, it's very objective, and there's no objective. All the parks are public, and unless we go that route, that could very well change. And that's what we don't want to happen, not without it being very difficult to change it.
Yeah.
So whatever we have, whatever we have now as a public park needs to stay as a public park, and the underlying land use needs to correspond to that.
Yeah, and Ms. Capeen, I think that his presentation includes all public land that may be designated and other things that not necessarily just parks, is that correct? Or is it everything?
Yes, yes. The ordinance contains a, it contains almost all the assets of the Parks and Recreation Department.
All publicly access, okay.
Things that are maintained, things that at one time were counted as, to comply with concurrency, which concurrency no longer exists.
Right.
So that's why when you get into discussions about parks, we will have this discussion that we're having today on a broader level. People will say, well, that piece of land is important to me, and I think it should be designated as a designated park. And staff is not necessarily have a decision one way or another, we're just bringing to you that we think there's going to be a larger debate and something that is going to take quite a bit of time. And if we're going to go through the route of having ninety-two plan amendments, we want to make sure we come to city council and make sure that we all understand that ninety-two plan amendments is quite a bit of time to change it. So we just want to make sure that we're all on the same page as we move forward.
Yeah, I think the start is to give us those ninety-two locations so that we can then make determinations on each and every one of them. You know, whether we do it as a holistic, and I don't know legally, we probably, I don't know if we can do it holistically, we have done larger comprehensive plan changes in this city on a larger basis, and it may be possible for us, I mean, you gave us the worst-case scenario, which is all the hearings all at once, it may be possible for us to do it at one fell swoop, depending on what those properties are. So I think that that's the first step. We need to know what those properties are that are not currently designated under a land use category that would consider it a park. So I think that that's our first step.
We can have that list to you fairly quickly, the list that, of the ninety-two.
Okay. If I could, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, go ahead, don't. Thank you, Mr. Chair. No, just wanted to commend this process and Councilman Suarez for pushing this along. You know, there's an old saying that if you're a hammer, everything's a nail, and I think that we have a lot of, there's individuals and movements, I guess if you will, that see some of our green spaces as nails for development, and we have to heighten the scrutiny when it comes to protecting those green spaces and parks, because that's what a city does. And we in our neighborhoods are entitled to those spaces for parks and family enjoyment, and we ought to continue to protect that. So I just want to commend this process. I think Ms. Capeen wants to say something.
Again, thank you for bringing, running with that, and I look forward to it. I hope it doesn't run like the tree. Because if it comes back in two years, I will be on the beach.
I have a feeling you're going to be on the beach a lot sooner than two years.
But for sure then.
Well, if, you think March seventh is a good timeframe for you to be able to come back with that or sooner?
March seventh, a list of the parks, a list of the dedicated parks which are in that ninety-two list, right?
Yeah, that, the list of ninety-two that are already designated as parks but not under the underlying land use. If you can bring those back to us on March seventh, is that a good timeframe for you?
Yes.
Okay, terrific. I'd like to make a motion that we would have Parks Department come back and Land Development about the ninety-two properties that are currently designated as parks, but land use does not match up. So if you can come back under staff reports on the seventh. Thanks.
Thank you.
Come talk to me. Got a question for you. You might not be.
I'm sorry.
You might not be able to answer the question, but I hope you can get the information from me.
Okay.
In our current budget, city budget, they're supposed to start the renovation of William Park back in June and July.
Right.
They haven't started. And I haven't gotten no updates on when it's going to happen, but I would tell you, I went out there this past weekend, and it's a danger out there. Boards are all loose. I mean, the facility is just not in good order, and these are parts that they're supposed to renovate. And, and, you know, I had to stop a kid from playing on one of the tables out there because the boards was all loose and cracked. So I know it's supposed to have started in June or July of last year, haven't started the process yet. When do you anticipate it starting? Because I thought for sure the mayor had promised me it was going to be done before I left council.
I would say to you that the project, Construction Administration is working with that project. I do know that we are very close to a, looking at dates for potential groundbreaking for that. So I believe that it has already been awarded, but they're working through some details related to that, so we should be at the very near future. As far as your concerns, though, you mentioned of something loose over there today, we'll be over there today and taking a look at that in the meantime, but I think you're going to see that project, I understand there have been delays with it, and we can check with the Construction Administration to get to more specifics on the date we're looking at, but I think it's very close.
Yeah, it's in the pavilion area where we're out.
Okay. I'll definitely have that looked at today.
And tell Construction Services that we need to have that ground break in before May first.
I will, I will make note of that request.
I'm not coming back after May first, so. Let's have that ground break before May first, because we'll be almost a year behind.
Understood.
So I just want to bring that to your attention, sir.
Understood. If I could just make one comment related back to the park issue, and I understand, you know, the ninety-two are coming back before you on March seventh. There are many parcels that are here within the city that we, the people love their parks here, and they're very passionate about those, and I love that within Parks and Recreation. But we also have people that are in areas where we have, I'll say, a pork chop of a roadway, where there's an island in the middle that's grass, and the, and the community have made that into a gathering site. So we have locations like that as well, and so ultimately on some of these, some of the decisions are going to have to be made of what is appropriate as park or possibly green space or other determinations as well.
green space, or other determinations as well, that I think we would need to go through as well. So I just wanted to kind of make you aware, there are the larger parks, but they're all smaller, and there are some that have almost kind of migrated to that community use.
Ms. Capeen.
So how do you, how do you designate those little pork chops?
Well, some of those aren't considered from our perspective as parks, but simply in the community, they are, and we work with the community when they want to have events at those locations.
They're just right of way, they're right of way. They are right of way, is that what?
They, they could be right of way, it could be just open space, you know, within the community, and not deemed as parkland. So that's a bit of the, the task we would have to go through looking at some of these sites. And some could be very small slivers to, to larger parcels, but I, I wouldn't let you...
You want to add that to, to what we're discussing, that's what you're saying?
I, I'm just saying, as you look at this issue down the road, we'll be looking at the 92 at this point, but there is some complexity that, there's time involved to look and determine what your, what your boundaries are, your considerations for those of being truly park space, or if you have other terminology for open space or green space as well.
Any of them been designated parks?
We have in some locations where it is a designated park, but the community sees it as a gathering place.
That's, that's the importance of, you know, he had the list of these 92 that don't have the designation, that's why it's important for us to know what that list is, because then...
Yes, exactly. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we go to item 61.
Good morning, Councilmember Sonia Little, Revenue and Finance. In response to your request to provide information on the, the bonding process for our capital projects, I'd like to provide you with a bit of information, and welcome any questions along the way. First of all, as it relates to funding for City of Tampa capital projects, the process begins with the departments who identify the project needs. Once the project needs are defined, including any engineering and any architectural requirements, it's then moved on to Revenue and Finance to start developing a funding plan. So with that funding plan, it's moved forward as a part of the budget process. So last year, city council adopted the current annual budget, which is FY '19 annual budget. We are currently in that process. And if you'll recall, you not only adopted an operating budget, but you also adopted a capital budget. The capital budget is a five-year plan, and then annually, council adopts the current or upcoming budget year. So every year, you have to come back and adopt a capital plan. If a project materializes after adoption of the annual budget, staff has to come back to council to get the budget amended. When staff comes back to council, by the time it comes before you, all the modeling, the financial modeling will have been done. We will have engaged consultants to assist to make sure that the city is pers...
If I could interrupt, Chair. You're, you're, you're giving us the explanation on how projects are funded now. Okay, the, the, the question was, now with new dollars that are going to be available, there are certain restrictions in terms of how we have to spend it, and a timeframe of when we have to spend it, and we have the ability to bond out for projects that might be long-term projects, 30 years or more. And so my question was, in that process, and I think we talked about this privately, which is, what is the rule of thumb, because we have to do this hypothetically, I know that, the rule of thumb concerning a certain amount of dollars that are going to be coming in, the difference between creating an enterprise fund for those particular uses, because they are specific as part of the referendum, and things that we can spend it for? If that's a good plan to go forward? Secondly, how much money might be available, using the best practices that are necessary in terms of bonding? What are the potential amounts of dollars we might have available? Again, in the hypothetical, we know hypothetically what we might be receiving, which is about $33 or $34 million. So how much of that would be, go, would go towards a bonding plan for larger projects? And I know that you're, you're looking at a capital improvement project on a five-year basis, but it's very specific. We have to, we have to present a plan to the independent oversight committee, and we have to make sure that that's done before a timeframe, and then start spending after that. So it, it all comes hand in glove with it, but as a, as a CFO and as a professional does this, how does that process work where we are going to bond a, projects? Because it is, when you're looking at the pieces that are there, we're going to have requirements to spend, and we're going to have requests from our departments on what they want to spend on, but we have some alignment as to what those are. So I don't want to get too specific, because you can't, but in terms of how you create that bond fund, how do you do that?
Right.
Okay.
Yes, sir. The, the process is the same.
Okay.
We, we have many restricted revenues already. We have gas tax revenues, we have CIT, so that process is still the same, whereas we have to identify the incoming revenues, the projected incoming revenues, as you just mentioned.
Mm-hmm.
In the hypothetical circumstances that you mentioned, the 30, 33 to 34 million dollars, and match that with what the department submits as the priority of projects over a one to five, maybe 10 or 20-year period.
Mm-hmm.
Taking a look at those revenues as they are projected to come in, and matching that against what is deemed to be the priority of projects to be funded over, let's use the five-year period of time, then it's determined by doing financial analysis, both in-house and with the assistance of our outside financial consultants, to determine what's in the city's best interest. Now, we can have pay-go...
Right.
Where we actually have cash and pay for projects. For the larger projects, that we will not have sufficient cash coming in to meet the construction needs of the project, then we consider either bonding, obtaining a short-term loan, a long-term loan...
Sure.
A line of credit, various vehicles that we can use to fund the larger, longer-term projects.
So the question, let's, let's back up, because you, you brought me down to at eye level, okay, let's, let's get up to about 20,000 feet, 20,000 feet in terms of what we're talking about. As a rule of thumb, you're going to be receiving $33 or $34 million. What kind of bond fund can be created with that amount of money, using all the criteria that you need in order to, if you're saying 30 million a year will equate to 150 million, 200 million, whatever that might be, there must be some type of formula or rule of thumb in terms of building a fund like that. Not all of it would go directly to repaying any bonds that might be issued, but there's going to be a certain amount of reserve, there's going to be a certain amount of money that we will reserve for pay-go, depending on, you know, who's the next mayor is. So that aspect of, what do you usually do for something like that? Because, you know, we've got other enterprise funds. So my, my question is, is it, is it a proper way of setting up for this type of funding mechanism, to have a enterprise fund available to us, as opposed to creating the recommendations of the, the, our departments, and then spending dollars? Because remember, we already know that there are specifics on what we're supposed to be able to spend this money on. So we're already, we already know that there's projects that have not been funded with other sources, and this is a way to fund some, some, some of those projects now, and to expand it, to do it for, for the future. So we already know that that's going to happen, period, okay? Regardless of what, you know, Transportation Department and any of the other departments are going to come back and say, here's what we need, and here's the backlog, what do we have to spend? And that's my question. What do we have to spend if we start receiving that money, we have a bond fund that, that is created for that purpose?
So if I understand your question correctly, the process is, as we do today with our other funds, the enabling legislation for the source of revenues coming in dictates that, in, in a hypothetical situation, that we have a segregated fund.
Mm-hmm, right.
And in the case of our other funds, they are segregated and can be used for only the purposes identified in the enabling legislation. Now, that fund is matched with the capital improvement plan, and once it's determined, and I'll go down, what I believe you were asking as far as how the bonds would work, once it's determined that the city will issue bonds to fund one or more capital projects, then we have to establish other funds that further segregate those monies coming in. And those funds would include enough money to pay for the debt service, obviously, the annual principal and interest payments. It would also include any reserve requirements, and any rate covenants, or anything to that effect. All of that would be driven by the credit. So as we start to formulate any type of bond program for a hypothetical program, as we start to formulate that program, it will be based on the conversations that we have with the rating agencies, because our goal is to achieve the highest possible rating for that particular credit, so that it drives down the city's costs of funding. And by doing that, we pay very close attention to, for example, the reserves. Will they require us to have 30 days of our operating and maintenance? Will they require us to have 60 days set aside in the program? All of those will be driven at the time that we present the program to the, to the rating agencies, to dictate how we actually structure it, because for a new credit, those things have not been identified yet. For our existing credits, we know where we need to be in order to achieve specific ratings.
So I go back to what the hypothetical is, which is, you're receiving funds, and, you know, and I know that you've done so many of these all over the place, in private practice, and then also here. You're receiving $34 million a year. What kind of fund does that equate to typically, you know, I mean, and not looking at the rates and everything else, how much money is a potential that's available there for a 30-year bond fund, let's say? Because that's, that's when the life of, of that particular taxes.
I, I'm a little bit reluctant to say that, Councilman, because I haven't seen the, the, we haven't landed on the proposed capital plan, so we don't know how much will be grant funding, we don't know how much will be cash funded.
Right, I understand, but I mean, you know, this is based on, this is based on your expertise in terms of what's the best use of trying to do something like this, which is, you're not going to, you're not going to bond out all 34 million per year, okay? You're going to, you're going to look and see what that amount is. There's going to be, there's going to be longer-term projects that we're going to have to fund, okay? By virtue of the way that the legislation is written. It's not like we can do everything on a pay-go necessarily, because there are some long-term goals that are part of the referendum, if you follow what I'm saying. And I know you've read it, and I know what you're, you're saying, but there is a timeframe problem that we have, because we do have to present not only the projects, but we're going to have to know how we're going to pay for those. So just on a hypothetical, because I was told hypothetical only, if you said, we'd have to put away 20 million a year to come up with a, a bond fund of X, that's what I'm talking about. Just as a rule of thumb, it's hypothetical, remember, and it's only just us two talking here, don't worry about it. Don't worry about the cameras and everything, nobody's going to say anything.
The reason I, I hesitate is because the only thing that I can give you would assume that we would bond out $34 million annually. We're not doing that.
Right. So would it be fair to say that with a $20 million amount, and I'm, we'll take out the other 14 million, and let's say, let's say it's 20 million to, for bonding purposes only, would that amount equal to somewhere in $200 million range, or $300 million range, 400 million? What would that be? I knew you brought your calculator.
I love it.
You're the only person I can ask this question to and actually come up with something.
So in a hypothetical case of assuming roughly 20 million over 30 years, conservatively assuming a 5% interest rate, the annual debt service, just to put it in perspective for you, would be roughly $1.3 million.
Okay. Okay, now, now, that's not the question I was asking. Now, debt service is fine, I'm glad you told us that, but how much of a fund would you create in terms of bonds? Meaning, you know, would it, would it equate to a $200 million fund, a $150 million fund? You see what I'm saying?
100% of the revenues would go into the hypothetical fund.
Mm-hmm.
Those revenues would be spent to pay for the capital projects, those revenues would then be spent to pay for debt service. The amount going into that bond fund would depend on how much debt we have outstanding to cover. Typically, 1/6th every month of the interest payment would go into a debt service fund.
Right.
1/12th of the outstanding principal payment coming due in that year would go into the debt service fund. We would either fund upfront a reserve for the debt service fund at the time of the issuance, so typically, that fund is already taken care of, the reserve. The only time it would change is, heaven forbid, you'd have to hit it to pay the debt service, but that's taken care of right upfront. And that is typically based on the amount of debt that you issue. So in this case of a $20 million deal, it may be 10, 10%?
10% of what?
Of the 20 million, the outstanding principal amount, or the maximum annual debt service, actually, it's 10% of the maximum annual debt service in some cases. It's typically 20% of the principal amount, or an amount equal to maximum annual debt service. And in this case, I believe the figure I gave you was $1.3 million. So $1.3 million maybe have, it may have to be set aside. Typically, for a hypothetical new credit, rating agencies want to see that not only are you building a project, but you can maintain it over time. So they may require, in order to get the highest level of a rating, an operations and maintenance fund, equal to a certain number of days of annual operating and maintenance, so whatever we deem to be that amount, we may have to put money aside in that fund as well. So those are the major funds, Councilman, in the case of a bond issue that we would have to be concerned with after the bonds are issued.
So you still haven't answered my question, which is fine, you know, because now, you know, if we're looking at 20 million times 30 years, okay?
Mm-hmm.
That, tell me if I'm wrong about the number, because you're better at math than I am, that's about $600 million, is that correct?
Yes.
And of that $600 million, probably it would, it, 5%, you know, what percentage of that would be debt as opposed to, as opposed to what we would be able to spend? So that's where I'm getting at, okay? We've got $600 million, certain amount is going to go to debt, and you've, you've explained it in very, very good detail, and I'm sure that people out there are really understanding bond financing now a lot more than I am. So what would that fund look like? Would it be $300 million, half of that amount, or just as a rule of thumb, hypothetically?
May I ask, are you, you asking how much we pay over time?
No, no. I'm asking what the total fund would be available in order for us to do any kind of capital projects? It's a simple question. You've done the math, you're already, you're halfway there, I just need to know. It's hypothetical, it's a hypothetical.
I don't understand your hypothetical question.
Okay, well, listen, we're, we're all out there, and people are asking us questions about what does this mean in terms of changing the way that we do business in the city and in the county, and in the, and at heart? There's a certain money, amount of money that's going to be coming in. There is a requirement for us to do some long-term projects. So let's say we create a fund using $20 million, how much would that fund be available for a capital project? Not the debt service, and not everything else, would it be about $300 million? May I? I just, well, let me, let me, if I could, I just, I want to make sure that she understands what I'm asking. As a hypothetical, and this is a math problem, it is not a problem about all the capital projects that might be there, it's a math problem. How much would be available for us to pay on a, for a long-term project? Let's say we had a fund that was bringing in 20 million, it's bonded out, how much would that create?
The, the answer is 20 million. If you're talking about the bond fund, I'm not certain, but I think you're, the answer, the way that I understand it would be if we...
No, no, but that's okay. Ms. Miranda wants to say something.
No, I, I just want to say, money doubles every so many years.
Right.
Depending on the interest rate. So whether it's a bond, whether it's a house that you're financing, it's basically the same with different numbers. So if, what I'm hearing is 20 million for 30 years, 600 million, of that 600 million, what is really left for the actual... it's basically the same with different numbers. So if, what I'm hearing is twenty million for thirty years, six-hundred million. Of that six-hundred million, what is really left for the actual project versus the interest?
Yeah, that's all.
That's what I think he's saying.
That's, that's what I'm saying.
Okay, that was two different things because I sized it based on a twenty-million-dollar bond issue.
No, 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 no. Twenty million per year coming in.
Okay.
Okay, that's, that's what the confusion is.
Okay.
Because I was gonna, I was gonna say, boy, those numbers went smaller and smaller. I don't know how that worked.
Yeah, I thought you meant a twenty-million hypothetical bond issue.
You've got six-hundred million, what's left for the actual project?
Yep.
I'd say about three-twenty.
That's what I, I was getting in that same spot. But, you know, Mr. Miranda, I always make sure the person that knows more math than me figures it out.
I don't know any math.
You know more math than pretty much anybody on this council, but I think she might be a little bit better.
So now I understand the question, I believe. Over twenty years, if we, if we are trying to determine twenty million dollars per year, over thirty years, actually.
Right, right.
I, I assumed a rate of five percent. So over that time, the generation would be one-point-four million, one-point-four billion?
Right.
Okay, but that total amount, we'd have to, I, and now I think what you were asking for, how much of that would be available? If we assume a one-point-five times coverage factor, that would take it to nine-hundred-and-forty million or so.
Okay.
Over the thirty-year period.
Terrific. That, that is, that is what I was looking at. And then of that, that nine-hundred-and-forty million, that includes the debt service as part of it? Or the debt service is the difference between the one-point-four billion and the nine-hundred-and-forty million?
That includes the debt service. So after you pay for the projects, the debt service, and that also would, you'd have to fill your buckets as well. That would be after the one-point-five time that you have to leave on, in the bank.
Sure.
So after you fill all your payments, that's the estimated amount.
So after everything, it's still nine-forty, that would be towards projects?
Right. No, no.
That's the whole fund?
Whole fund.
Got it, got it.
Whole fund.
All right.
All right.
All right. That, that is what I was asking. Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Sorry for the confusion.
No, it's okay, it's okay. Believe me, it, it's, it's hard when we're, we're trying to do things in a hypothetical fashion too, so. Thank you.
All right.
Will the city be allowed to generate interest off their money?
Definitely.
Yeah.
Definitely. So when the money comes in, Chairman, it goes directly into the revenue fund that we talked about and it generates monies based on the city's investment policy.
Do you have any understanding of the organization's structure? How just, I know we're gonna have a fifteen-member board. Well, are they gonna have, who gonna manage all of this? The CEO, or they gonna hire somebody to manage all this? Instead of leaving it in the hands of this fifteen-member board?
Are you talking about the ILC, sir?
For all the funding and, and, and protocols that gonna have to take place.
Do you mean coming to, once it gets to the city, sir?
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the overall.
South Tito City Attorney, the, the way things are structured now, and again, we're talking hypotheticals. But the way things are structured now, that, that board that's sitting out there really is just to make sure we're following the provisions. They're not deciding how you spend the money as the city of Tampa, Temple Terrace, whomever. You go make sure the projects that are funded are funded properly. There are certain percentages dealing with different functions. You can't spend more of this money on this function. They're really overseeing to make sure we're following. It's kinda like an audit. They're not really determining how the money is being spent. If they have a problem with it, they can bring it to our attention. But they don't have the final word on how we spend unless they wanna challenge it.
So and also, they won't have like a day-to-day operational person?
No, they, they may or they may not. I'm not sure if, how they're gonna do that. Because you also have the MPO in there as well. And they've got a role that they're overseeing some of them. Then they're getting one percent of this hypothetical money.
Okay.
But basically, it's gonna be the city's determination how it's spent as long as we meet the standards as we do on any bond issue that we do or any revenue source. If there are restrictions, we have to live with no restrictions. But we make those determinations here.
Okay, thank you.
And Chair, it's, it's as long as we are spending as per the referendum requirements. There are certain percentages for different projects or types of projects. We can do what we want as long as it fits within those buckets. Okay? So, and that's, that's why there's a timeframe that we have to follow in order for us to get those projects going. And that's why I wanted to make sure we got this question answered. So I appreciate it, Chair.
All right, thank you. We're going to have ten-thirty.
Move to open the public hearings, fifty-six through fifty-eight.
Got a motion from Mr. Khan saying I can invite Mr. Maniscalco. I want to pay that motion, say aye.
Aye.
On both. If you're going to speak on item fifty-six through fifty-eight, please stand and be sworn.
Do you sound swear to offer to tell the truth to the whole group?
Barbara Lynch, Land Development Corporation, on item fifty-six. The applicant has requested a two-week continuance to February twenty-first. The staff has no objection to that.
All right, do we need a motion to continue this too?
Yes, please with the date.
Anyone wants to speak on item fifty-six then continuing to February twenty-first? Item fifty-six, may continue February twenty-first, two thousand nineteen.
Chairman, I see no one. I move for continuance of item fifty-six of February twenty-first, two thousand nineteen at ten-thirty in the morning.
All right, got a motion from Mr. Miranda saying I can invite Mr. Maniscalco. I want to pay that motion, say aye.
Aye.
All right, item fifty-seven.
Rebecca Kurt, Legal Department. I am here on item fifty-seven. I'm gonna be handing out some papers for you to look at. This is a petition for review hearing, City Council. When you hear these petition for review hearings, there's about between twelve and fourteen different standards of review that you're being asked to apply. So we're trying to help you guys get clear for each one. As a preliminary matter, the request that is before you today is for a design exception two. But if you will look at the third page that I handed to you, it is the code provisions that govern a design exception two. When you are seeing whether or not you are going to approve or deny this design exception, these are the criteria that you have to evaluate. So I printed them out separately so you can look at them. What has come before you is there was a, a request to the zoning administrator for the design exception two. That was approved. So what's coming before you is an approval of a design exception two that was challenged. A petition for review was filed by a third party, a neighbor. The petition for review actually was filed both by an adjoining neighbor or a neighbor within two-hundred-and-fifty feet and the Davis Island Civic Association. The Davis Island Civic, Civic Association, the best that I've been able to determine, does not have owned property within two-hundred-and-fifty feet. So they are not a petitioner in this case. But you still have a petitioner. And Davis Island Civic Association can participate as a member of the public along with the rest of the public. They are just not the petitioner in this case. I have also handed you sample motions. Again, I know that because all of these are different, it can get very confusing. This came as an approval. So if you want to uphold the approval, there is a motion that will end up granting the design exception. If you want to deny the design exception, that's also highlighted. And that's the motion. You will be overturning then the approval that was granted. Again, this comes to you as an, as already approved design exception. So it is the petitioner who is challenging it who has the burden of proof in this case. The first page that I handed you is a process that you typically follow in these. It's just spelled out so everyone can follow along. And I'm available if there are any specific questions.
Okay, petitioner. I'm so upset, staff, Mr. Lirio.
Gloria Moreta, Land Development. This is a design exception two-dash-eighteen-dash-fifty-six. The property is located at ninety Columbia Drive. And the property is zoned RM twenty-four. The RM twenty-four allows for a maximum height of sixty feet. I got the, under maximum height for RM twenty-four, sixty feet. But you'll notice that there's a footnote two that says for every foot of building height above thirty, all yards must be increased to by one foot. The request before me was to allow for an increased height from thirty feet to thirty-three feet, which represents a ten percent increase in height. The code does allow under administrative exceptions to allow for an increased height of up to ten percent. This is the site plan that was reviewed. It shows that the base setbacks, especially along the front, the side and the corner are at seven feet. The rear actually has a larger-than-twenty-foot setback. This is the proposed townhouse development is for six units. Basically, a, a flat roof with a thirty-three-foot height. This is a stairwell which is exempt from height limitation. In terms of my review, I, I looked at the request. They are in Davis Island, which has flood issues in terms of they're having to raise their elevation. The design of the townhouses was going to be oriented towards Columbia Drive, which I felt was the characteristic, characteristic pattern of development in the area. Have photographs of the property itself. This is directly across the street at the corner. You can see that there is a planned development that council approved. That's about a four-story building right to the rear of the, the property. In terms of adjacent, there's a townhouse development that is directly adjacent on the south side. And then this is just a view of the property looking, I guess that would be north on Columbia. In my review of the request, I conditioned the approval that they had to comply with the Hillsborough County Aviation Authority height limitation, although I think they should not have any problems with that. I felt that the request did not interfere with the rights of others and that it was a reasonable request. It's only a ten percent height. If you look at the RS districts, the RS sixty districts, by right, they are able to go up to thirty-five feet in height at the base setbacks. In this case, they were asking for thirty-three feet at the base setback. I felt that it was within the ten percent request and I approved the, the design exception.
Good morning, council members. I've just submitted for the record the staff report, site plan markup with the penthouse elevation, my remarks. And I also wanna call your attention to my neighbors who are here in support of, of this position. They're wearing yellow name tags. My name is, my name is Kathleen Farzanigan. My husband Fred and I own a home at eighty-two Columbia Drive that is within the two-hundred-and-fifty-foot radius of ninety Columbia Drive, the subject of today's hearing. I'm here to respectfully request that this design exception be overturned and the required RM twenty-four zoning code be complied with. The approval of a height increase from thirty feet to thirty-three feet without the RM twenty-four code requirements of an increased setback at one foot to one foot ratio is not supported by the criteria as required in section twenty-seven dash sixty E five. Over twenty-five residents from our Columbia Drive and Bering Street blocks attended the November ninth, two thousand seventeen zoning hearing in front of council to express our concern about the zoning request. The applicant prevailed and received council's approval. The property is now RM twenty-four. We left that hearing with the understanding that the developer would abide by all requirements of RM twenty-four. We base that understanding on the following. Transcript of eleven-nine hearing, Mr. McLeaney. Again, there are no waivers requested because this is not a PD. It is not site plan controlled at this time. So any development would have to comply with RM twenty-four. We are going to be meeting all the development codes. And also, we'll have to meet the height regulations as established by code RM twenty-four. A maximum of nine development units could be established on this property if we can meet the development criteria. But that also includes meeting all the green space requirements as well as the setbacks and providing for all onsite parking. Councilman Miranda, your parking will be on your own land, cannot be on the street. Mr. McLeaney, yes, sir. Cannot be on the street. It has to be on the property and has to provide for adequate backup space between the edge of the property, property line and the garage enclosures. Staff report on this rezoning. This is a Euclidian rezoning request. Therefore, no waivers are permitted. As the petitioner, my interest in asking you to overturn this decision is not an attempt to be adversarial. I believe the block facing the marina is a prime location for improvement. I am simply asking that the developer comply with the RM zoning requirements and follow the code. With new construction on a clear lot of seventeen thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty square feet, the developer should design a structure that conforms to code. That is common sense. They knew the facts when they made the decision to pursue the development. All comments from the zoning hearing indicated that was planned. We would not be here today if those commitments were followed. Of real concern was the lack of transparency in the process. Final elevations and plans were not available within Acela until long after the original notice and just days prior to the decision letter. If elevations and site plans are modified in such a significant way, a new notice should be required. In addition, it appears that the developer seeks to develop a structure that may be better supported by a different zoning code. He wants the height allowed by RM twenty-four of up to sixty feet, however, does not want to comply with the setback requirements. RM sixteen or eighteen would allow for the development of this project up to thirty-five feet, however, would not allow for the height he instead, instead planned of forty-two feet. It sets a dangerous precedent to allow the granting of RM twenty-four and then eliminate, without adequate justification, the requirements of that code. My neighbors and I are concerned that the increased size and scale of this property completely changes the character of this block. The comprehensive plan and zoning codes, the rulebook city council created, are intended to be reflections of the needs of the community. In order to be granted this design exception, the developer must demonstrate unique circumstances that warrant such a waiver. Again, the site is of sufficient size to allow the design and development of a townhouse project that adheres to code requirements. Davis Islands is not a historic district. So we do not have the protection of the Architectural Review Commission. We are therefore dependent on the comprehensive plan and zoning codes and look to the city staff and the city council to place great importance on them when you are asked to consider a development project. The, the decision letter determined that the minor encroachment in the required height at the base setback would not be injurious to public health, safety, or general welfare. I disagree. The design exception impacts public health and safety and general welfare. On Columbia Drive and Bering Street, parking is a major issue. Employees from TGH park on Columbia Drive and Bering in violation of four-hour limits. Walkers, runners, and bikers use these streets for recreation and to access the Sandra Friedman Tennis Courts, the Garden Club, the Marina, Roy Jenkins Pool, and Little League Field and Playground. Bering is, Bering Street is the throughway by which people access those venues. Summer camp is held each year and large groups of children walk back and forth from the tennis courts to the pool, Little League Field and Playground. Parking has made this trek treacherous. There is real danger that someone will be hit by a car. I have seen several close calls. Tennis players at Sandra Friedman Tennis Courts have launched a petition drive to ask the mayor and the city council to make parking enforcement a priority. Because the garages for the townhouses are the absolute minimum size, sixteen feet opening for two cars, it is impractical to believe that all. for two cars, it is impractical to believe that all parking for townhomes will be within those garages. This is especially true assuming that the only place to store trash and recycling bins must be in these garages. There is no room for a trash dumpster on the site. There is no provision for required off-street parking. Number of off-street parking spaces, section twenty-seven dash two-eighty-three dash seven. Given the size of the driveways and the lack of space for trash receptacles, not only will residents of these townhouses likely seek street parking, any gas would be required too. The developer has asked for a design exception from thirty feet in height to thirty-three feet in height. These drawings clearly show a height of forty-two feet as defined by the code. As such, on a side of seventeen thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet, there is no reason that setback requirements cannot be met. As the drawings show, the top deck of the penthouse to be forty-two feet. Per code, as explained to me, the deck penthouse should be built twelve feet from the setback. However, the elevation provided shows only nine feet, ten inches from the side setback. I know we're running short on time, so I'm going to wrap up so we can continue. In conclusion, I believe that the developer has not met the requirements to show adequate justification for the design exception. The residents of Columbia Drive and Bering Street strongly believe that the added density, limited parking, and dangerous alley configuration is a hazard to public safety, given high pedestrian, bike, and auto traffic. And I just do want to show you two more pictures. This is the Islander condominium that's being completed on the corner of Bering and Davis. And then this is the narrow alleyway between that property and the subject property that would be developed. When the original zoning was approved, it was understood that the RM twenty-four code would be adhered to. It was stated that no waivers would be requested. Without adequate notification and with late changes to the design documents, it appears the process has been compromised. We are also trying to protect the character of our neighborhood. I'd like to ask you to consider what you would do if this was your neighborhood. Therefore, we respectfully request that you overturn this decision letter that allows for the design exception and require the developer to comply with the RM twenty-four code. Thank you. Any questions?
So if we're not finished, then we will reconvene at two. But we are going to stop at eleven-thirty because we have another obligation that we all need to get to. So just want to put you on notice that at eleven-thirty, I will interrupt you and recess until two o'clock because it looks like we're not going to finish this. All right, we may start.
Good morning. Julia Mandell with the law firm of Gray Robinson, four oh one East Jackson Street, and I represent Davis Island Townhouse LLC, who is the developer of this project. I've given you all the background materials in my legal argument in order to save time because I do know that you have to leave to go to another commitment at eleven-thirty. And I am to simply ask the architect to get up and describe what his plans are and what was the purpose behind filing for this design exception. But I just wanted to make a couple of points before I turned it over to him. First of all, this was a Euclidean zoning to RM twenty-four, which does allow at a maximum height sixty feet. It's, the project and the property is surrounded by properties that are both zoned with a PD, which allows excessive height over the thirty-three feet, and also single-family residential, which at the setback line also allows for the development of homes at a thirty-five-foot maximum. There was some discussion about some other zoning classifications that would have allowed for townhomes at a thirty-five feet at the setback line for the purposes of moving forward. As you all are aware, at the time you would file for rezoning, you don't always know what the plans are going to end up being, and you don't always engineer the site. In this instance, upon engineering the site and making sure that they went forward with the townhouse project that was consistent with the area that was part of the community and looked proper and well-done in the Davis Island community, the project has been proposed, which has a maximum height through the entire project of, I believe, it's thirty-five, thirty-three feet. The areas that are shown, were shown by the petitioner over and above that height are not part of the calculation for the determination of height. So those are some of the issues I just wanted to go ahead and raise with you on the initial discussion. I think it is important to put it in the context of what's being requested versus the idea that this development does have a maximum sixty-foot height and is surrounded by properties that can go to thirty-three, thirty-five at the setback line of twenty-five feet. All the green space has been provided as required, the parking criteria has been complied with, and all other criteria of the code. This was an issue that came up during the phase under which the architect was moving forward with plans and determining that there were flood elevation issues that are throughout Davis Island, as one might imagine. I'm going to ask the architect to go ahead and come up and just describe his plans, and I'll save any additional time for rebuttal. Thank you.
Okay. I just wanted to mention just a few key points about the project.
Please state your name for the record.
I'm sorry. My name is Michael Colazo. I work with Planmark Design Studio. And so really what we're looking to do is, RM twenty-four allows us to have nine units. We were just looking to get six in there. And our original intent was to try to get about twenty-four feet, but because this is not a multifamily structure, this is a single-family residential, our setback went from five feet to seven feet, so we complied with that. We reduced all the units. Another important factor was because of the, the design flood elevation puts us closer about five feet. As you can imagine, stairs can get pretty high. Accessibility becomes a challenge. So we wanted to design this so that this could meet accessibility, so people can arrive at the ground level. That ground level is not considered habitable. That's just really to get you to the elevator, to stair, and it's really two stories on top of that reception area. It will be, because of the fact that the design required us to be at the setback line at the minimum, the seven feet, that thirty-foot really became our building height. And working with trust companies and all the design constraints, we could not meet the thirty-foot. We got it down to just under thirty-three feet by inches, by being a little creative with it. But really, we look at this as a, you know, two-story townhouse unit over a reception area that's conditioned. I mean, that's mainly the project there.
Again, I just want to close because I know you're pressed for time, and I'll hold the rest of my time for rebuttal after this. But I just want to remind council, the process has been in place in your code for at least fifteen, probably longer, twenty years, for these types of alternative design exceptions that used to be called administrative variances, to allow property owners who go to develop their property deal with issues on the ground as they, as they go into develop without having to rezone, without having to go through a much more formalized process. That is what is existing in your code, so I understand the frustration of the neighbors, but it is not unfair to say that this, this property owner, like all property owners and developers and homeowners, have the right and the benefit of the code as it exists today, which does allow this as an opportunity with the right level of evidence. Ms. Moretta, who's been reviewing these for years, made a determination that the sufficient evidence was submitted to her to show that this project, in order to meet flood elevations, was eligible for the ten percent increase in height. And again, looking at the area surrounding it, determined properly that it was in compliance with the community. This, the thirty-five-foot at the twenty-five-foot setback or the seven-foot side foot is the benefit for almost every other property on Davis Island. And given the fact that they were trying to have a development that fit the character of the neighborhood, she deemed it appropriate, and it is our position that council should deem it appropriate. I'll save whatever remaining time I have for rebuttal. Thank you.
All right. And then one in the public will speak on item number fifty-seven. Please come forward.
Good morning. Just chair, council members. Good to see you again. We appreciate your time on this matter. For the record, I'm Bob Abiger, five forty Bossus Avenue. I'm here zoning chair for the Davis Island Civic Association, and I have been sworn. We're here to strongly request support for the applicant's request to overturn the approved variance for this site. We think the fat case is fairly straightforward. You know, there's strong developers' representation that they could fully comply and no variances would be sought. Unique circumstances, I don't believe, are demonstrated in this instance. If we believe that flood requirements are a unique circumstance, then no height requirement under code would be enforced virtually anywhere in the city of Tampa. It's a large site. This isn't about height. It's about setback and overdensification of the site, the character of the neighborhood and the character that we're trying to protect for the island. It really is, again, the setback. The upper floors also have cantilever. That top deck is occupiable, which is why there's a stairwell to the top floor. In the parking situation, as Kathy mentioned, you know, where are those dumpsters going to go on the street? It's going to be exacerbated. Safety could be impacted. So I think there's a clear indication that there is the ability, if you will, for there to be a significant negative impact in the neighborhood, in the character of the island. Now, I recognize, you know, the civic association has no standing. We appreciate being able to speak to this matter, but we do have a large voice of advocacy for the island in the best interests of supporting our residents. We're not a historic district as designated, but we are a historic district in everyone's mind and in the character of our neighborhood that we're fighting hard to protect. It isn't just any neighborhood, and we can only keep it as it is with your help and support. Variances are required and necessary in development. You guys know I know that, and I appreciate how hard staff works to work with developers to make these things viable. But we look forward to a new code-compliant development because with your help, variances have to be warranted, reasonable, consistently applied, and not a code workaround that can set an unfortunate precedent as we view this one. So we strongly request your support for an overturn. Thank you very much.
Good morning, council. My name is Linda Saul Senna, and I live at one fifty-seven Biscayne on Davis Islands. Years ago, decades ago, I wrote the Davis Islands plan. More recently, I served as a member of city council and watched council recognize the unique and special character of the island. What is most impressive to me is the significant investment that the city of Tampa has made on this street. The city has invested in the tennis courts in this direction, the marina directly in front, and the Little League fields to the right. We're talking about lots of activity, not including what the city does own, but what's very active, the Junior League, the marina, and then the Women's Garden Club, which has lots and lots of events. What's being proposed here would not meet the concerns of fitting in the space, the height, the parking, the receptacles for trash and recycling. It's very, very concerning to the neighborhood that it all fits. But you've already approved the rezoning, so that's a given. What we're asking you today is to, based on the city's significant investment around here, based on the fact that you know it's a tremendously active area, that you don't allow additional waivers, which would further compromise the safety of the neighborhood and the character of the neighborhood. Thank you very much. And if you don't have time to make a decision now, I don't want you to rush. I want you to think about this carefully. We'll come back. Thank you.
All right. Give me the last speaker, and at that time, if you want to do any rebuttal, you can do that. This will be the last speaker.
Thank you. Good morning. Debbie Zommerman, one ninety-two Corsica Street, Davis Island resident, civics association board member, and I have been sworn. I am here to ask that new construction within our community follow our code. Other than the fairly large assemblage, there is nothing unusual about this site, which exceeds seventeen thousand square feet and is a substantially rectangular property. The city's codes provide for a number of buildable options, which would not require an exception or variance. Specifically, the zoning districts identified as RM sixteen and RM eighteen allow for the construction of six townhomes on the site. Additionally, per table four point two within twenty-seven one fifty-six of the code, the townhomes could reach a height of thirty-five feet without any reduction of yard setbacks. If the thirty-three-foot height is really the issue, the applicant could pursue the rezoning of the site to an RM sixteen or an RM eighteen and build the units in conformity with the code. The applicant also has the building, the ability to build the townhomes within the RM twenty-four zoning specification, which allows for a maximum height of sixty feet subject to the requirement that for each foot of building height above thirty feet, the required yard setbacks will, should be increased by one foot. Per section twenty-seven forty-three, the height is the vertical distance between the finished grade to the highest point of the structure, which was illustrated within what was previously entered into the record. The design exception decision letter was inconsistent with the code when the structure height was measured from the structure front from the highest point, and I respectfully disagree that that structure on top of the roof does not, does not fall within a strictly stairwell category. It is part of the structure height calculation. This error was significant as, therefore, excuse me, the yard setback at thirty feet should be increased by twelve feet, not three feet. The resulting structure is required to be tiered in a manner similar to a wedding cake. The tiering is extremely important as it mitigates the urban canyon effect that would occur if such standards were not in place. This design exception is essentially a go-around, which disguises the true intent of the request, which is to avoid a significant setback requirement under the guise of a less significant height exception, way out of line of the specifications within our code. Please follow our code. Overturn this decision and require that the applicant develop their site in conformity with the codes. It's really simple. If the applicant wants townhomes at a thirty-three-foot height, rezone to an RM sixteen or eighteen. If they want townhomes with a forty-two-foot height, build within the RM twenty-four zoning, which requires significantly increased setbacks at thirty feet. Thank you for your consideration, and I do have backup for the record that supports my statements. Thank you.
All right. To the applicant, I know you have rebuttal time, and we have two minutes left. Let me say this.
I believe quite.
Well, we, well, what we're going to say, whether somebody else want to speak or not, we're going to stop at eleven-thirty, all right? That's two minutes. Okay? So, well, yeah, just hang on. Yeah. So we're, we're not going to finish this in two minutes. Rebuttal time for the applicant, and it'd be fair for anybody else who want to speak. We're not going to finish. So let me just remind everyone, if we resume this afternoon at two o'clock, we will only have four council members present. So we will have to make a decision. Petition and applicant, you need to determine. There are only going to be four council members available. available this afternoon at two o'clock. But we're not going to be able to finish this now. And so what is the pleasure of council?
I would move that we continue it to our next regular meeting, which is February twenty-first.
I agree with Mr. Cohen, and for parties of both parties, fairness to both parties, I really believe that all you have to have is one person, one council member, on one side or the other, and you're not going to have any quorum of four. So for the both, the petitioner and the person who's not the petitioner in this case, that we continue it for, like Mr. Cohen said, for another week, so you would have the seven members, and both sides would be satisfied. It'd be a more equitable situation for both parties. That's just my opinion.
All right. Quickly.
Julia Mandell, we will not object to that continuance. I want to make the statement for the record that this petition is stayed during this process, but given the fact that we won't have a full council, and I think we all believe it's better to have fairness in this process, that we go ahead and accede to the continuance, I would ask that we're as close to the beginning of the agenda as possible so that we can move this forward. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, council. May we have a time certain for that? Is that?
Well, we're going to move, we'll make this item number one on the agenda.
At ten-thirty on February twenty-first. That's the motion to continue.
All right. Got a motion from Mr. Cohen, second by Mr. Miranda in the first discussion of motion. All those in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Move both. All right. We'll continue this to February twenty-first at ten-thirty a.m. Stand a recess to two o'clock.